I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
(inaudible)
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 Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor Landervan.
Present.
Counselor Livinggood.
Present.
Counselor McCucci.
Delayed.
Counselor McDonald.
Present.
Counselor Nicola.
Present.
Counselor Regis.
Present.
Counselor Spinelli.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Eight present, one delayed.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, September 26, 2011 meeting.
So moved.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Clements?
Thank you. Just if you could on page nine, new owner at Cadell's, actually it was the property, is new owner for the property that houses Cadell's. I just want to make sure it's really clear in the minutes, should anybody ever need to go back on that. It's about three, it's almost towards the bottom, three quarters down. If you could just put it, that's the new owners, in the property that houses it.
Houses it.
Yeah, that way it's clear that nothing has changed there. Thank you.
Any other changes or? Have a roll call, please.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports. A, general government, Counselor Spinelli?
Madam Chair, I have no minutes and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. B, DPW, Counselor Vandal?
Ah, Madam Chair, no minutes and I have a meeting scheduled. I think I'm going to shoot for next Wednesday, if that's available. I'll let you know. Thank you.
C, education and human services, Counselor Clements?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no minutes and no meeting scheduled at this time. We still have an opening on the HHS. I know there were a few interested parties. Please submit your interest forms to the town manager's office if you would like to take part in the education and human services subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. D, planning and development, Counselor Livinggood?
No minutes and no meeting scheduled right at this moment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. E, protection of persons and property, Counselor Landervan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report and no meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, chairwoman's announcements. Couple. I think most people received in the mail this past week a postcard, and this would be from the health department, I believe, regarding, "New trash recycling program starts October 17, 2011. Please inform any tenants," and then it has "trash. Place clear plastic bags of trash in adorable, rodent-proof, watertight trash container with tight-fitting cover at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on your collection day." I've received a lot of phone calls regarding this postcard. I'm going to try to make it as clear as possible what the postcard is saying. On your collection day, do not take your trash barrel, bring it to the curb, take your bags out and put them at the curb. Do take your trash barrel to the curb and walk away from the barrel. Allow the hauler to come and get your trash out of the barrel. They will be, if they haven't been already, advised that the barrel has to look the same as it did when you placed it there. In other words, it has to have a cover, it needs to be upright, and then you can pick it up later. This is to avoid, and I seem, it seems like a lot of people are confused by this, the goal is no bags on the curb. We don't want you taking your barrel and removing the bags and putting them on the curb. The clear part, I'm told that there are a couple of places in Southbridge, if I'm not mistaken, and those would be?
Big Bunny, Big Y, and all the hardware stores.
Are now carrying the plastic bags?
Will either have them, or will shortly have them, is what we've been told today.
Okay. As of Saturday, Big Y didn't have them. I was in Big Y, but it's possible that they are in the other locations at this point, but we are working to get those bags. In the meantime, the bigger concern is to make sure the bags are in a barrel. I don't care what color the bags are, just make sure they're in a barrel, please. And this is not your tote. This is not your recycle tote. It is a separate G.I. can, or diaper pail, or whatever it is that you need to put out there that has a cover on it. In terms of watertight, that's a little bit, you know, it doesn't need to be watertight. It just needs to have a fitted cover over the barrel. So that's what that means. Mandatory recycling. Place recyclables in clearly marked recycling toter or bin at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on your collection day. If you do not have enough recycled items to put in the 64-gallon tote, you can use your old blue recycle box that we used to have prior to having the totes, or any container that is clearly marked recyclable to put on the curb. Bulky waste. Register any item accepted curbside that will not fit in your trash container by noon on Monday and place it at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on Tuesday. Tuesday will always be the day that bulky waste is picked up. If you call Casella to make an appointment because you have something that you want them to pick up, they're going to take your name and address, make sure it's out there on that Tuesday, or the Tuesday from when you've made that phone call. And please make sure that if it doesn't get picked up, you do not leave your items out there forever, because you may get a knock on the door. And all of this is to begin on October 17, just to clearly make sure that you understand that. And if you have any further questions, I recommend that you do contact the health department And there's more information that you can get off the website, which is www.thinkreduce.com. So hopefully that'll help. Bless you.
Madam Chair, somebody called, I've also got a lot of phone calls. Somebody called me today, and they said, their question was, they called the Board of Health, and they said, Kim, we know who that is, said that you can just throw your trash in your trash receptacle, you don't need a bag. Is that so?
Well, that is what we were told by Mr. Moran, who I had asked to be here this evening, but he had some other previous engagement and could not attend. That is what Mr. Moran did say, and I question that. And the reason I question that is because, as someone mentioned to me this weekend, and I believe he could be correct, I don't believe the haulers want free trash thrown up there that will attract vultures, birds, rodents, but it is a question, I think, that might need to be clarified.
You can have free trash.
You can just throw trash in your bucket like it was, as if it were lined, and it's not.
That would make more sense.
Well, that's...
Than to make the poor people go out and buy clear plastic bags that are very expensive.
True, but you know, I think that you might want to stop and visualize somebody having a trash can in their kitchen with no liner, just throwing rubbish in it all day long. I mean, if you want to do that, that's totally up to you. I don't find that to be too sanitary, but if that's what people wish to do, that's totally up to them. I personally wouldn't imagine that that's what they would want up there, but if the manager says that that's perfectly okay, well then, okay. That's perfectly okay. Either way, there ought to be no bags on the curb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. I want to clarify something for the council. Last Thursday, I came into the town hall because every Thursday I have to approve the agenda, and in doing so, I met with the town clerk who had received some paperwork that we will be voting on this evening. It is a request by, I want to say, state?
Woburn.
We're the only state in the country, it appears.
It's a state.
Thank you. That's what it is. So it's a city clerk in Woburn, Massachusetts, who is trying to pass a bill, I guess you can call it HB 1972, and it's an act regulating election primaries. What they're trying to do is to take one day all across the country for election primaries, and this is to make it easier to vote for our people overseas, so that it's, you know, that they can vote, will get more people voting if it's all on one day. One of the items that we're going to be looking at this evening on the agenda in changing some of the things, or amending some of the charter items, is to change the date, the election date that the town has every year. And the date that is being proposed by this city clerk is the first Tuesday in June. Second Tuesday? His is the second Tuesday in June? No.
You just said the clerk. Oh, this guy?
This clerk. First Tuesday in June. And because our charter, possible charter change is looking at the second Tuesday in June for the town, I grabbed the agenda and made a change on it so that it would coincide with this. I'd like the council members to go to item, agenda item number 24. You will see that crossed out is the second Tuesday in June, and in its place was put the first Tuesday in May. Would you please cross out the first Tuesday in May and leave it as we voted it in the subcommittee to bring up for consideration the second Tuesday in June? That was my error. I was trying to make it easier flow. It's not an easier flow, and even if it was an easier flow, it was my error. And those are the two things that I had on my chairperson's announcements this evening. Moving on, agenda item number six, town manager's announcements. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple items. I thought you, I actually was going to cover the new trash regulations too, but you did a good job with that. The only thing to add, we do have some additional educational opportunities. On the educational workshop for the new trash and recycling program is going to be this Thursday, October 6, at 6:00 p.m. in the Pioppi Room at the Jacob Edgers Library. If you're interested in attending that, please give us a call, a Board of Health call, at We also do have several additional efforts that are going on. We will be running ads, a series of ads, in the Southbridge Evening News and the Telegram and Gazette. Obviously, we've already accomplished the sending postcard to individual property owners. We have educational videos that are currently in the works, and I think we'll be close to finalizing those, and they'll be on the public access channel. And we will be placing signs on top of the Make Southbridge Home A-Frame signs throughout the community, and placing a, I think we already have a display in the town hall lobby, as well as we will be posting to the access channel, the website, and the Think Reduce website that the health department operates. So the idea is to get the word out, to do heavy education, and we will begin, educational enforcement will commence on October 17. On the next, I've received some material today on Halloween festivities for October 31st. There'll be a parade at 5:00 to 5:30 that will run from the Mary E. Wells Junior High to the Common, and town-wide trick-or-treating is from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Also, this may come up under the Citizens Forum, but at the Future Southbridge Group is having a meeting to discuss chloramines. The town will be participating in that, in the form of, we have one of the consultants that came out for the informational meeting, Bill Nunnery, will be out to, come out again to respond to any specific questions, and that is going to be at Harrington Memorial Hospital, Conference Rooms 1 and 2, on Tuesday, October 18, at 6:30 p.m. So I know that that may come out in Citizens Forum and other forums, but I just wanted to try to make sure we get that early enough in the meeting so people have an opportunity. But the town is participating. I did speak with some folks from DEP on last Friday, and I know that they are sending their representative to attend that as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Agenda item number seven, Citizens Forum. And before we begin, I'm going to, once again, as I said, read, as provided in Chapter 2, Section 5 of the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, "All inhabitants and employees of the town shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard at any such meeting in regard to any matter considered thereat. For regular agenda items, each speaker shall have three minutes to speak to the agenda item at the time the agenda item is being considered. The time limit may only be extended by a majority vote of the councilors present for an additional two minutes. Each speaker shall have one opportunity to speak per agenda item. Additionally, there shall be a Citizens Forum, which will allow citizens the opportunity to present information or address issues to the town council that are not regular agenda items of the meeting. Each speaker shall have five minutes to present the subject of his or her concern. The time limit may only be extended by a majority vote of the councilors present for an additional five minutes. Each speaker shall have one opportunity to speak at Citizens Forum. Please state your name and address."
My name is Kenneth M. O'Brien, and I reside at 858 North Woodstock Road, and as you, Madam Chairman, adequately pointed out, all of us received a copy of this in the mail this weekend. It is my opinion that virtually all penalties and fees assessed against Southbridge residents and/or property owners regarding garbage and trash collection or recycling have been done so unlawfully since at least 2007. As a result, such penalties and fees should be refunded to Southbridge residents and property owners, along with appropriate interest from when the charges were paid. I have come to this conclusion based upon provisions of Massachusetts State law, as well as our own town bylaws as last revised in 2009. Section 1.111 of our town bylaws provides, in section 1.111, that violation of any bylaw or rule or regulation of any town officer, board, or department may be enforced by any police officer of the town of Southbridge. It is under this provision that the recently approved additional police officer to enforce regulations regarding garbage collection, as well as prior citations and collections have been enforced. However, this bylaw is in violation of Mass. General Law, specifically Chapter 111, Section 30 and 31B. Section 30 states explicitly, "Boards of Health may appoint agents or directors of public health to act for them in cases of emergency, or if they cannot conveniently assemble, and any such agent or director shall have all the authority which the board appointing him had, but he shall in each case within two days report his action to the board for its approval, and shall be directly responsible to it and under its direction and control. An agent or director of public health appointed to make sanitary inspections may make complaint of violations of any law, ordinance, or bylaw relative to the public health. Unless any police officer acts or was acting as an agent of the Board of Health and under their exclusive jurisdiction, rather than that of the chief of police, the officer lacked the authority to issue citations related to rules and regulations for the control of the removal of transportation or disposal of garbage, awful, or other offensive substances, MGL Chapter 111, Section 31B." Let me now turn to the issue of fees and regulation regarding recycling. Current bylaws, excuse me, current town bylaws last revised in 2009, according to the town website, provide in section 10-201.2 that, "The provision of any bylaw applicable to recycling existing on the date of this bylaw is adopted shall remain applicable to recycling in the town until regulations regarding recycling are adapted in accordance with this section." These bylaws were adopted on February 26, 2007, thus until amended prior bylaws were in effect. The same section also provides that any amendment of the existing bylaw requires it be posted in a local newspaper for two weeks and followed by a public hearing. As in all cases of bylaws or bylaw amendments, it is subject to three readings at successive town council meetings prior to adoption. Once adopted, it must be posted in the office of the DPW, the Board of Health, and the town clerk, as well as in each precinct. Since 2007, there have been no notices or hearings relating to amending this bylaw. In fact, it has not been amended since 2007. As such, by its own terms, the only enforceable recycling bylaws were those in effect prior to the adoption of the current bylaws. Not only did the previously existing bylaws differ substantially in terms of what must be recycled, there were no fees or penalties associated with them. Further, the action of the Board of Health to mandate regulations as regards recycling does not apply as it does in the prior case. Under Chapter 40, Section 8H of Mass. General Law, the jurisdiction over a community's recycling program may be delegated at the discretion of the legislative body. In numerous cases, it is delegated to the DPW or a special recycling commission. Thus, without local legislative authority to do so, the Board of Health has no overriding authority to establish regulations on recycling beyond that provided in MGL Chapter 111, Section 31B. As a result, the provision of bylaws 10-201.2 take precedence throughout the existing bylaws. Specific authorization for the collection of fees is provided for, usually with explicit dollar amounts. None of these provisions exist in the current recycling bylaw. Without having been amended as specifically provided for, there is no basis for the fees currently being assessed as regard such items as TVs, computer monitors, et cetera, or for any other such charges. While I do not necessarily disagree with the specifics of the current practices, any effort to enforce them has been done without any basis in law. Therefore, such assessments, fees, and penalties have been unlawfully imposed and collected. Thus, any citizen or property owner who has paid such assessments, fees, or penalty, is entitled to having them refunded, along with the appropriate interest, since the time that they were collected. If the town fails to do this voluntarily, then I believe that they could legitimately be subject to a class action suit on behalf of the citizens or property owners who have been so disadvantaged, along with compensatory and punitive damages.
Mr. O'Brien, do you have, do you need more time?
No, I'm just finishing up. I have copies of this statement, along with all supporting documentation, one for each council member and the town manager. I apologize to the town attorney. I didn't know you'd be present tonight, otherwise I would have spent the additional 75 cents. Would you be good enough? I will, however, be willing to answer any questions regarding my statement.
Does anybody have anything? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question would be that, in light of this, if we're going to employ a police officer to do this, then it would seem to me that that should be paid for and accounted out through the Board of Health, and that part of that salary should come from the Board of Health, as opposed to from the Police Department budget.
Well, I think that's a question and a debate for a subcommittee meeting.
Might I respond to the council's question?
You know, we do need to...
Fine, fine, very well.
You know, I think that might be the best thing, and once we have a subcommittee formed, that would be a good time for all of us to discuss this. Mr. Caprera?
My name is Danny, and I'm just the Brian. Has done a lot of work and understands the law. I would be very willing to meet with him even tomorrow, just try to sort through that so that we can get a handle on it, and then maybe present it as clearly as we can. Obviously, there's a lot to absorb very quickly. So why don't you meet with me afterwards? Maybe we can schedule something. That's fine, we can schedule something.
Thank you.
I'll follow that up. How you doing? Dan Butler, 35 Brookside Road. I just had a question. I would assume this would be for town manager? I'm not sure. A couple of our neighbors up in Brookside Road, Harrington Road area, there's rumors going around, I guess it was a building lot approved for a house to be built to the right on Harrington Road, there's some pink markers on the trees. Somebody, I think it's Dave Lamontaine, lives directly across the street from that on Harrington Road. He had said that there was a meeting, I believe it was last Tuesday in Charlton, to approve the building of this house there, which none of us were informed of, if this is true, because it's Southbridge property, and it's also at the base of the hill that got wiped out from the tornado. They had to cut all the trees down. I mean, it's right there, it's basically wetland. I mean, if you go there any day and try to walk, it's good knee-deep muddy water, but I mean, they have come out, there's some marking tape on each side. We've been told that there's a house going in. I mean, does anybody know anything about this? Because it is Southbridge property, and they were saying that there was a meeting in Charlton to approve it. I know my neighbor Lamontaine had asked the building inspector, he said, "It's buildable, a buildable lot, which I'd like to know how you can build a house in water." And we're also, if there is a house going there, I mean, if somebody can tell me, we're worried about, I mean, we have it, Saturday was four months since the tornado. The hill's wiped out now, no trees. We're still worried about what's going to happen in the fall with the extra rain, we're still worried about what's going to happen in the spring with the snow runoff, and if somebody's planning on building a house there. I mean, the last, well, the hurricane that was flooded as well, but the tropical storm, I mean, I had water up to my thighs in my backyard because there's all kinds of drainage issues since the tornado. I'm trying to address with neighbors and all, but I mean, now we're hearing that there's a house being built there. I mean, does anybody know?
I've not heard anything about a house being built there, but maybe the manager has?
Actually, I have not, but I will check in, I will check into it and see. And if you just, if you give us a call, actually, I have a meeting out of the office tomorrow, but if you give me a call on Wednesday, we'll get some details for you.
Okay. Okay. Other question would just be, basically, I mean, is the town done with cleanup as far as tornado, or, I mean, I know they're, everybody's talking about the clear trash bags and all these things. I mean, I'm still worried about rebuilding my house. We've got neighbors with half a house trying to finish before winter, and we've got stumps on the side of the road with X's on them, still sitting there. We've got big debris piles up on Charlton Street that are blocking our contractors from trying to work. I mean, stacks of trees on the sides of roads here and there. I mean, we're, as residents, we're doing the best we can, and we're trying to build this, get ready for winter. We heard that FEMA was approved to, I guess, reimburse something. I don't know how that works, but, I mean, is the town done cleanup, or, I mean, are we going to see more removal?
Just, are there any other questions? Because I'll jot them down and respond. I'm sorry, I didn't do that earlier.
Thank you.
In terms of the town's efforts, the stumps that you're referring to are stumps that were in the right of way. We are negotiating, trying to track down the most, the lowest, most qualified bidder to come in and do that work. So we are getting close to doing that work. So the stump work, I know, specifically does still need to be done.
Okay.
In terms of the brush, actually, we did a neighborhood walk on both Charlton and Worcester Streets, I think, two weeks ago, and then three weeks ago, respectively, and I, you know, I didn't see any significant amount of storm-related debris that was there. We did do quite a bit of work for an extended period of time beyond, but the only work that we've basically committed to doing at this point is to remove the stumps that were in the town right of way.
Okay.
To my knowledge, everything else is on private property.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to complain, I just, I know, most of it, I was told, was on private property, so I guess it's supposed to be a resident's responsibility, but, you know, like, I got a pile on my neighbor's yard of pine this high, and it's, it's been attracting mice. We've got a skunk now living in there, we've got all kinds in there, and we're talking about Board of Health with trash bags, and we got mice and rats running around. I don't know, I was just wondering how that worked. I was just checking, not trying to complain. Appreciate it.
If there are specific properties, again, if you come by the office and just let us know, we're happy to, we're happy to look at it.
Okay. I just forgot to get an answer if it was done or not. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. While at the farmer's market this summer, which is on the Southbridge Town Common, can you hear me? I noticed that the trash cans are chained to the trees, and the train, the trees are getting girdled, where the chains are rubbing or sitting against the bark. And that's like an indicate, indentation in the tree bark, sorry. Girdling doesn't have to be a death sentence for trees, but it can be. I have a Catalpa tree that was girdled, because we tied a dog to it, and it just bloomed this year. It hasn't bloomed for 15 years. If the trees don't recover, they can become weakened and may fall onto cars, parked cars around the common, or onto the people at the common. And I'm concerned about the trees' health, but also the potential for them to fall. So there has to be a better way to anchor the trash cans than to bring ill health to the trees, wait a second, or liability to the town. So, and while we're on the topic of trees, I also wanted everybody to be aware of a tree pest called a woolly adalgid, and it's been located in Southbridge. I have a little picture, but I know it won't show up that well, but I can pass it around. These small pests attack hemlock trees first, which is their primary host, and spruce trees next as a secondary host. And if you own or see hemlocks or spruce trees with the cottony masses in their needles, please treat them. These insects will kill the trees. There will be a display of this information across from the town clerk's office in the town hall, at the Conservation Commission Board, or you can look at the website from the USDA or UMass Extension, which is where those pictures came from. And I'm working on a piece about it for the newspaper, too. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward?
Rossiel Fernandez, 56 Everett Street. With regard to our speech, the chair's made it pretty clear that she's going to follow the rule to the T, and I, I have noticed in the last several meetings that the vice-chair uses a lady's analog wristwatch to time us. I would suggest that you at least get a debate timer so that we get our five minutes. Video after video shows that the timing there is a bit faulty, so I think, in all fairness, I think it would be good to get a timer that would appropriately tag our time. Even a Big Y Kitchen timer, I think, would be even more fair. So, with regard to the open meeting law violations, at the last town meeting, the town manager mistakenly said that the Attorney General, Attorney General's office sent in their quote "findings" end quote. That's actually not correct. I received the same letter, and what they in fact said was that there was no determination, and they're awaiting my reply. My reply is essentially to say whether I was satisfied, and based on last meeting's announcement, I was not satisfied. So I did send my reply in, which is what they were waiting for, along with five hours of video evidence. So then we will wait the actual findings. With regard to the enforcement of our trash laws, I was one that really pushed for enforcement, and I think, I think that has been twisted or misunderstood in the last several weeks. And, and the result of that is, is our rewards money has been shifted over to, to a punitive system. What, what we wanted was enforcement for, from staff members that we're already paying for. The Board, the Department of Health has five staff members, and some of them are handsomely paid, some of them make three times the median, median wage of the average Southbridge resident. And so what we were asking for was that those highly-paid employees actually do the job that they were hired to do. Part of their job responsibilities were to actually do what this contractor consultant is being paid $32,000 now to do. And I'm not sure if, if the contract has been ratified, but I do have some questions about that. With regard to the Green Brown Consulting, $32,000 of our rewards money approved without any debate to pay a consulting firm, quote "consulting" end quote, firm. Mr. Clark presented this firm as worthy of $32,000. I'm not sure if they are worthy, I have no idea, because I, in doing research, I couldn't find anything on this contracting firm or consulting firm. But they are certainly not a firm. It's not an established business. There's no record that indicates this. Not the Secretary of State's, not the Town of Dudley, not even Southbridge. There's no business permit in this town at all for a contracting, a consulting firm that is going to get $32,000 of our rewards money. There's an excellent, excellent piece with all the details on this on www.greatersouthbridge.org. What we do find is it's a young gentleman who registered a web domain and now has a Facebook page. I certainly hope that's worth $32,000 of town money. Several issues arise here. Mass. General Law requires that contracts between 25,000 and 50,000 have three public bids, and I'm not aware of a bidding process that happened for this $32,000 contract. Maybe I'm wrong. I'm hoping I'm wrong. I'm hoping that the administration here is doing the due diligence that we all deserve, especially $32,000 of our rewards money. The Inspector General has interpreted this law pretty clear, and it even made, even made it more open in 2003. These bids are supposed to be pretty public and pretty out there so that the town gets what they are paying for. And Mass. General Law also prohibits, and is more stringent than most states, at misclassifying what are employees. It's clear that the responsibilities that this contractor consultant, quote, will be doing, will be doing, were clearly defined as responsibilities of several of the health department's personnel. That's basically a clear violation of that Mass. General Law when it comes to employees, employees versus contractors or consultants. So I would, I would ask this council, before they ratify that contract, to look a little bit deeper into that. Misclassifying employees carries some severe fines for the town, should that happen, so I would encourage that, some due diligence be done here. Thank you again for my time.
Five minutes and four seconds.
Stephanie Di Martino, 92 Harrington Street, Southbridge. I'd like to make an announcement. On Tuesday, October 11th, Southbridge Tornado Relief will be holding a support group at the Southbridge Community Center, located at, and forgive me if I have the wrong address, but I think I have it right, 153 Chestnut Street, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM, for people who were affected by the June 1st tornado. It will be the first support group that we will be holding. And I'd also like to, on another note, ask the town council tonight, when you're going over the changes that we worked on in general government, if you would please table 441 and 442, because I don't want to see the outcome correlate with what's going on currently with Ann Benaima of the Board of Health, especially after reading the article today in the Telegram and Gazette about her being asked to resign from the Board of Health. And on another note, I lived in Worcester for five years, and we used yellow trash bags that were required by the City of Worcester for all their residents to use, and we were, we were able to purchase them at every supermarket. They had them in the aisles and also up at the cashier when you were going out. They weren't expensive, and I don't remember ever having an issue. So I think in giving these clear bags a try, won't be that much of a burden on everyone since we already buy trash bags. It's just switching over to clear bags, so I'm going to give it a try, and I hope other people will also give it a try, because recycling is very important for the environment. I recycle, and since we've been recycling more, I've been teaching the kids to recycle as much as they can. We have noticed our trash output is, become much lower, and our recycle output has become much higher. So, and I, I would also like to suggest, since we're going to have an officer enforcing this, if maybe the officer and the health department could come together and create a program for the school system, and get the kids involved, and have sort of like a rewards program at the end of the program with the kids to help them to learn more about recycling, and that way they can bring it home to the parents, and it could be sort of an education for everyone. So thank you very much for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you.
I live at 81 Wall Street. I have a question about recycling. I, you know, I'm not concerned with the bags and stuff, but one thing I noticed on that, that postcard that went around is that it says the homeowner is responsible for compliance, but I own a three-family house. How am I going to be fined if my tenants don't comply? That's my question.
That's a good question, and it's one that's been overlooked repeatedly, but it is part of the bylaw. I'm going to find that right now for you. I pointed it out.
I believe it is the homeowner that is responsible.
Well, it's not. It's not.
Yeah, I was going to say, how, how can I enforce it?
The homeowner, the homeowner is responsible for providing, if you have a three-family or more, up to six-family, because that's what we pick up trash for, the homeowner is responsible, the landlord is responsible for providing a trash receptacle, so whatever they need in that respect. If you have a multi, if you have a two-family or less, then the tenant is actually responsible, according to our bylaws. It is the, the, the residence's responsibility to be responsible for their trash in general, so, and we have discussed this in, in subcommittee. And so I would, and I've commented that, you know, yes, absentee landlords can be a problem in this town, where they don't come and really enforce the rules to their tenants, too, and certainly we want to make sure they're aware of what goes on, but it is every residence's responsibility in this town to pick up after themselves, their children, their pets, all of it. So, you know, if you see something going on that doesn't seem right to you, make a phone call to the Board of Health, too. Feel free, you know, I mean, we can only do it if we all work together, you know? But as I said, it is the landlord's responsibility to provide some sort of receptacle for them to keep their trash in. It is then the tenant's responsibility to make sure the trash gets in that trash can and goes where it needs to go.
And those, those big recycle totes?
The recycle totes, right, okay, and let me, I know Council Chairman Nicola mentioned this. If those totes are too big, and there were some smaller totes at the beginning, but obviously with our elderly population and, and our, and smaller family size, a lot of people turned in their big ones and got the smaller ones, and they're no longer available. When I say smaller, I mean average trash can-sized ones, not the tote box, which doesn't have a cover on it. But my understanding, it's been explained to me more than once, that if you, as Council Nicola, as Chairman Nicola mentioned, if you would like to have smaller containers, trash can size, you just need to clearly indicate on them recyclables. So I would recommend some strips of duct tape, permanent marker, recyclables. So if it's too hard to store that big container because you have multiple.
Well, just because it's a three-family.
Or in your case, a three-family, you can't store it down below and you don't want to have to come down. I know I keep a smaller container in my house and the bigger container out, and every couple of days, we just go out there and dump it. But each individual home has to figure out how that works. They do it in Worcester, as Ms. Di Martino says. You have to buy, that is mandatory, buying those bags in Worcester, because you don't have free trash pickup. So in our case, we're not limiting your trash, but we expect you to follow the rules as to recycling, putting it in the right place, and being responsible for it. So I hope that helps you out a little bit, clarifies a little bit.
Yeah, I just, my thing, the way it is worded on the card is the homeowner, in me, is responsible and will be fined, and it's like, how can I enforce that to my second and third floor tenant? I mean, I can't, I can't make them do something. That was, that was my main concern.
If you find, I would suggest, too, if you find you're having trouble with specific tenants, call the Board of Health, ask them to come and educate them. I'm sure a couple of warnings, because that's what we're supposed to be issuing, warnings, and then enforcement, so certainly I think they'll get the picture.
I'd like to, I'd like to read it, if I might, to you. There are two pieces to this puzzle. 10-101.3, "The owner of any dwelling that contains three or more dwelling units, the owner of any rooming house, and the occupant of any other dwelling place shall be responsible for providing as many receptacles for the storage of garbage and rubbish as are sufficient to contain the accumulation before a final collection or ultimate disposal, and shall conveniently locate the containers and shall provide covers or lids to prevent objectionable odors from entering any dwelling." That's one. The next one is 10-101.4, "The occupants of each dwelling, dwelling unit, and rooming unit shall be responsible for the proper placement of garbage and rubbish in the receptacles." So while as the landlord, you may be responsible for providing them with the receptacles, they're responsible for putting the trash in those receptacles and getting them to the curb, the way the bylaw reads. Does that make sense to you now?
Yes, it does. I just wanted to be, you know, I just wanted to make sure, I guess.
Of course, absolutely.
That was important to us, too.
Thank you for asking the question so we could clarify it. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
Kevin Buckston, 255 Elm Street. One other point that I would like clarification on is the time when trash is to be put out prior to this new program, which I'm not sure why you call it a new program, because technically, nothing's really changed. You're just reinstating the bylaws. Previously, we could put our trash out after 7:00 PM the night before, and the barrels had to be taken in by 7:00 PM the following night. I was wondering if there, were we mistaken in that assumption, and the bylaws actually state 7:00 AM?
All this, this little postcard says, I hate this word, I use it too much, but unfortunately, practically, everything I read that comes out of, out of all of our documents is ambiguous. "Place clear plastic bags of trash in a durable, watertight container at the curb by 7:00 AM on your collection day." So this does not say that you have to have the trash out after 7:00 PM and by 7:00 AM, though I do believe the bylaw is specific about that.
1.1, you got it? Well, it says it can't be left out longer than a 24-hour, 24 hours before or after collection period. "Such containers shall not remain upon any sidewalk or street in the town for longer than 24 hours before or after the collection period."
Madam Chair. Counselor?
I think the reason for the card stating by 7:00 AM is because that's the time that Casella starts picking up, so.
So you might miss it, if you don't come down.
In, in talking with personnel in the health department today, I realized that the, the information on the card is a condensed version, of course. We didn't receive a copy of the bylaws, and, and in full, we didn't even receive the seven-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet that they have covering pretty much all the different aspects of recycling and curbside, in both English and Spanish, which I presented to this council before, asking, "Why don't we get this information out and stop it?" Waiting for residents to come in and pick one up. Could we send it out in the mailing? I realized there's a cost involved. There was a cost involved with this postcard campaign, and because of the limited size, I think some condensing needed to be done. Like I said, prior to October 17th, I don't know whether it was just a common rule which was issued to the residents, that you could put it out the night before, for those people who maybe couldn't get it on the curb at 7:00 AM, whether they leave early, or, you know, for whatever reason. I think it was, it was expressed that 7:00 PM the night before your pickup, you were allowed to put your trash out.
You still can, Mr. Buckston. According to the bylaw, you have 24 hours.
Before or after?
Before or after.
Right. That was as of.
After 7:00, like, my, my trash day is this morning. After 7:00 last night. So, you can, after 7:00, like, my trash day is this morning. After 7:00 last night, I was, that's when I put my trash out.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. And I look forward to the possibility of seeing the bylaw review get started, because I think we've all talked about the fact that the bylaws do need to be made contemporary to our present curbside pickup program and would also help benefit the education of the citizens as far as recycling goes. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward?
Hello, my name is Amelia Peliquin. I live at 275 Marcy Street here in Southbridge. And just to correct one point on Mr. Fernandez's statement, the contract, or the proposed contract for Green Brown Consulting is $36,000, not $32,000. I've actually taken a look at this contract and the proposal. It's $21 an hour for 36 hours a week. And I guess, I don't know if technically, in terms of Massachusetts labor law, $36,000 a week counts as a full-time job or not, but I don't see how this person can afford to buy their own health insurance, get all of this laundry list of different insurances. They're supposed to get liability insurance up to $1 million, automobile insurance up to $1 million for bodily injury per occurrence, workers' compensation insurance, professional liability insurance, and this is in addition to not having any sort of sick time or vacation time. And like, after this person goes through all of the expenses of the contract, they're going to be lucky if they're making minimum wage to go through our garbage. And I just, you know, I can't help but think that there's something that really stinks about that, aside from just the garbage itself. And given the fact that, if you look at the way these decisions have been made about how we're going to be spending the Recycle Bank money that used to fund this wonderful program that me and my family really enjoyed, and a lot of the people that I know really enjoyed it as well, I think that this is just changing Southbridge into a much less friendly community where we're having police go through our garbage, we're paying somebody to be a consultant for this business that doesn't actually exist to just look through our garbage. And I've gone back and I've looked at the meeting minutes for meetings in which the demise of Recycle Bank has been discussed, and I'm not totally convinced that Recycle Bank should have been discontinued without coming before the council first. So, counselors, I will urge you, first of all, I just, I have to say, I know you guys get a lot of stuff to look through every week, but I think that the fact that you guys voted to approve $36,000 to a company that doesn't seem to exist anywhere that I can find, it wasn't on the mass.gov page for corporations, what is it called? You can check it at home. It is the, if you go to mass.gov, it is the corporations division page of the Secretary of the Commonwealth. It is not there. The town clerk of Dudley doesn't have a business certificate on file. I looked up the address on the proposal. It's a residential house. If you call the cell phone number, the bottom proposal, you can't even get a voicemail to leave this person a message. And I went to greenbrown.us and it appears to be just like a Juma template that, on a domain that was registered like a week or two after this proposal was given. So, this is, it's very strange. And I'd really urge you to consider bringing back Recycle Bank at some point in the future, because it would make Southbridge a wonderful place to call home, knowing that we could have a rewards program back and people aren't doing all this weird stuff with the Recycle Bank money that nobody likes. So, thank you for your time. Take care.
Do I have anybody else who wishes to come forward for Citizens Forum? Okay, we're going to move on. Agenda item number eight. I don't have any swearing in our presentations this week. Going to move right on to agenda item number nine. Vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and J. H. Lynch &amp; Sons for the reconstruction of Henry Street, roadway, and sidewalk according to the unit prices provided on attached bid sheet or approximately 22,000, I'm sorry, 220,000, $186.10 total, provided by the Department of Housing and Community Development.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Livinggood?
Madam Chair, this came before the planning of developments up to me, and it was unanimous vote to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Maccucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Landman?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, vote to amend the bylaw to adopt an Economic Development Commission and Industrial Development Financing Authority provision under Chapter 3, appointed officers, Section 3.222 Economic Development Commission and Section 3.223 Industrial Development Finance Authority. This is the final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. We have a roll call, please.
Counselor Maccucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Landman?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no?
Thank you. Vote, this is agenda item number 11, vote to accept the proposed resolution in support of H. 1972, quote, "an act regulating election primaries," unquote, now pending before the General Court at the State House.
So moved.
I'm, go ahead.
So moved.
Motion, in a second. Shall I read it? Do you want me to read it? Okay, do you have it? Still? I'm going to read it so that you all understand what we're talking about here. I'm just going to read the resolution itself. I've got that. Thank you. Whereas, according to the Department of Defense Federal Voting Assistance Program, there are 11,691 active military-duty Massachusetts residents residing overseas. And whereas, for the November 2010 election, Massachusetts requested a waiver from a requirement of the military in Overseas Voter Empowerment Act, also known as the MOVE Act, to send absentee ballots to American citizens, American overseas, at least 45 days before an election, quote, "due to a late primary," unquote. And whereas, a report by the Secretary of the Commonwealth revealed that in the November 2010 election, only 400 ballots from Massachusetts active-duty military personnel stationed overseas were counted. And whereas, the General Court is considering H. 1972, quote, "an act regulating state primaries," unquote, a bill that moves the state primary to allow Massachusetts residents residing overseas to vote privately and securely, and combines the presidential primary with the state primary to save taxpayers at least $8 million. And whereas, a number of states have moved their primary dates earlier in the year to comply with the federal MOVE Act and to provide relief to taxpayers by reducing the cost of elections. And whereas, the Massachusetts state primary scheduled for September 18th, 2012, stands alone as the last primary in the country in 2012. And whereas, in written testimony, the FVAP concluded, quote, "Passing HB 1972 will significantly improve voter success for many military members, overseas voters, and their families," unquote. And whereas, HB 1972 simplifies the election process, decreases the opportunity for, quote, "voter fatigue," unquote, reduces the cost of elections for taxpayers, and establishes fairness among candidates. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of, the town council of Southbridge, I guess, of Massachusetts, supports the adoption of HB 1972, quote, "an act regulating election primaries," unquote, pending before the 187th General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and directs the town clerk to transmit a copy of this action to the municipality's state delegation and to the Joint Committee on Election Laws. And what it would do is it would move the presidential primary to the first Tuesday in June, combining the state election and presidential primary into one day. This will result in the savings of at least $8 million. So, that's what this is about. I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the town manager, what is your assessment of this particular proposed legislation, and do you support it? How does this affect Southbridge in our voting structure and our costs?
Actually, I know the town clerk is here in terms of, I think the material actually came to her. In terms of my standpoint, I don't, I think that as long as there's not a need for two sets of election workers, if we were to have a local election and a federal and state, there would be a need to have two sets. I think this actually eliminates that need, and by consolidating, it could realize a savings for the town to accomplish. And in that circumstance, I think it does make some sense to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Anything further? We have a roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Landman?
Yes.
Counselor Maccucci?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number 12, vote to accept that all charter changes voted upon and approved by town council shall be sent to the Massachusetts Senate and House of Representatives in General Court assembled to be passed as special legislation and to be approved by the governor, with the caveat that such charter changes shall take effect only upon acceptance by a majority of the voters of the town at the next possible town election.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think at this time, I want to express my disappointment in this council, and I want to clarify some things here to the public and to this council. In our packet is absolutely nothing relative to the recommendation of the Southbridge Charter Review Committee, which was appointed by the previous chairman in September of 2009. We did our due diligence. We did a year's worth of work. We had two meetings a month for 12 months. We had three public hearings. We published documents that documented the history of what we did, projected what we were going to do. And here in my hand are the minutes from that endeavor of everything that we recommended. What we're voting on tonight, very little of it resembles what we did. There are some very significant changes. I'll talk to when we get to those particular items, but I'm very disillusioned with the usurpation and the distortion of what the work that we did. And so, what ended up happening is that this council, throughout that work, and took up that work in its own behalf, not consistent with the charter, and became its own charter commission with its own recommendations that have come tonight through the use of the General Government Subcommittee. That's essentially what happened. I think it's important, I want that into the minutes, that not only as a councilor, but as the chairperson of that particular committee, I think it was disingenuous that our work was not included in this package, that it's not included in this minutes. I would want it to go forward with anything that goes up relative to these votes tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? Counselor Clemmons?
Thank you. With Counselor McDonald's stern reply, I would like to point out that he mentioned the word commission, and in no way, shape, or form was the Charter Review Committee or us as a council a commission. The Charter Review Committee was just that. It was a review committee to look over and to spend time, which they did, and we appreciate it, and that's been vetted numerous times at the, at other meetings and gone over page by page in general government, very thoroughly, with lots of time for input. And it was a review committee to look it over, to make suggestions, and in the end, it is the legislative body, and it's the council, to look over those considerations and decide what potentially could go forward. And in our efforts to make sure that we didn't usurp our charter present that was voted on by this community, any particular considerations that we may choose to vote for and to send to Boston have the caveat that they have to come back to the people, regardless of whether Boston approves this or not, and bring it back to a vote of the people. So, in the end, it continues to go just as the first charter did, to the vote of the people. So, I find your comments to be, you know, a little disheartening and not conducive to the community. And I think that there was much discussion on this, and we did go over very carefully the review committee's information. And we, as far as this council taking it up, there was ample opportunity for the previous council and the previous chair to take it up, but it didn't happen. So, we took care of the business. And according to Senator Moore's office and the information that I've received, charter review is such, it's a review committee. Recommendations, it is up to the council at any time to make proposals and send for approval from the state. We don't have to have the people vote on it, but we as a council, thank you to Counselor Regis, who proposed it, made that motion, voted to say that any changes, as I said, will go to the people, and they will ultimately decide as it should be, not a review committee of six or eight or whatever, not a council just of nine, but the people out there. So, I think we've done our due diligence on that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
One moment, please. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As a member of the Charter Review Committee, I can't help but feel that the comments just made by the vice chair are somewhat disingenuous, insofar as, first, a lack of conformity with prior precedent. For example, when they're discussing the school committee budget, you invite the school committee chairman and you invite the school superintendent. When I sat on the housing authority, and there was a question of replacing a member who had passed away on the housing authority, the housing authority was invited to sit in with the council to participate in that discussion, nomination, and election. This was a year's work that was shoveled off to a subcommittee. It was work that held three public televised hearings, but we were not even extended the courtesy of being called here for a public hearing to address the deletions, none of which are mentioned here, of the recommendations we made and why, nor the reason why recommendations we made were altered and why. This was all done in subcommittee. Reality is, those meetings are not televised, they are not widely attended, and this is the fundamental and founding document of this town. And in my opinion, quite frankly, there are a number of proposed changes here that are rankly political, and there are a number of recommendations that were made that were, are left out of here that the public isn't even aware of. So, for the vice chair to make the comment she did, I think is nothing short of disingenuous. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I inadvertently used the word commission, I know I said committee at the first time. I may have said commission. I stand corrected. That was an improper use. We were a committee, and it's so noted. I did not mean to do that. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you.
Just one comment. What we're talking about here is common sense and to the vice chair, through you to the vice chair, it's just common sense. It's a year's effort. It's debate, it's deliberation, it's involvement of the community for the best product, for long-term. This is going to be a long-term thing for us. And to suddenly turn that into a small subcommittee exercise in which, as the previous speaker said, they're not widely attended, they're not televised, there is, certainly, it's an open meeting, but, you know, it's not a public hearing. It's a different process. So, what we're talking about here is common sense and the lack of. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on, and I'm going to start this process by having Counselor Larry Spinelli, who was the chair of the General Government Subcommittee, read his report. Counselor Spinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Report of the General Government Subcommittee, Larry Spinelli. Report of the General Government Subcommittee, Larry Spinelli, Chairman. Brief history or timeline is in order. The Charter Review Committee presented its final report in September 2010, approximately 13 months after its appointment. This document, for whatever reason, languished for many months. Letters by three counselors asking for this report to be placed on the council's agenda finally got it scheduled for the June 1st, 2011, meeting. Unfortunately, the tenebrae struck and this was never accomplished. New elections and new members to the council have brought us to this point tonight. Our charter is an excellent document. It reflects intelligence, fairness, and an understanding for the needs for checks and balances in government that was lacking under our prior form of government before its adoption. The charter outlines responsibility for each division of government, who is represented by each, and the overriding need for cooperation to effectively make government work. Our present form of government only works if the manager and council work together for the benefit of our town. This system of checks and balances is at the heart of our charter. To change this balance because of people's shortcomings is absurd. Good government is the responsibility of elected town counselors, our manager, and our townspeople themselves. The General Government Subcommittee met on July 18th and July 26th, 2011, at duly posted meetings to respond and carry out Chairwoman Nicola's request to review the work of the Charter Review Committee and bring forward to the Town Council a list of proposed changes to our charter for the full council to enact and forward to the legislature for approval. This first order of business by the new council chairperson was a direct response to a campaign promise made to the people of Southbridge. The General Government Subcommittee saw the report by the Charter Review Committee as containing what appears to be subtle changes to the balance of the original charter, placing more power into the council's and the council chairperson's hands and taking away executive power from the manager. This would have the effect of politicizing the system of checks and balances and take power away from the people. The second problem was seen was the Charter Review Report says it would go to the legislature for approval, but it says nothing about bringing these proposed changes back for the voters to enact. The General Government Subcommittee met with former committee members, past Charter Review members, members of the public during the two meetings it spent, reviewing what was proposed and what it felt needed to be changed in our charter. The Subcommittee made proposals it feels would work to improve our form of government and not subtly change our form of government. The Subcommittee's first order of business was to establish how these changes would be presented. It was clearly felt that any changes would be brought to full council. Once council completed action, the proposed document would go to the legislature for approval. But the caveat would be this, that no changes become permanent until the voters decide them at the ballot box. This process allows the people of Southbridge to once again vote for their form of government. There are 14 proposed changes to our charter. Some are direct changes made by the Charter Review Committee. Some changes are simple housekeeping where the proposal is a one-word change of date, a word or a phrase used to clarify a section. Some changes delete or add to a section. None of the proposed changes affect a system of checks and balances nor the essence of what the charter is. And Madam Chair, this is my own personal statement. It is not reflective of the Charter Review Committee but my own.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, there's some very bad misrepresentations in that statement. This form of government that we presently have, the Town Manager is not the executive head. It's clearly stated in the minutes from the Charter Commission of 2002. We clearly and extensively studied that. There has been a misrepresentation put out there that it currently takes 2/3 to remove the manager, and it doesn't. It takes just a simple majority to remove the manager. There's some changes in here that are very worrisome. To insinuate in that report that our Charter Review Committee was making some type of political effort with it, we went to great lengths not to, that's why it was done in the light of day, through open meetings, through hearings, and well documented. And that report by the General Government Subcommittee Chair totally paints it in a different light. And to illustrate that, I'd like to read from our charter, the letter from the Charter Commission that went out to the public, that they voted on overwhelmingly in support of, that you're going to change very drastically tonight with some of your votes if you vote in the affirmative on these things.
Sir, you can do that as we come to each vote.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on agenda item number 12. Do I have any further discussion from anybody else? Okay, could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 13. Vote to accept that after the Town Council has completed its voting on all possible charter changes but before, notification of these changes has been sent to Boston to start the special legislation process, the Town Attorney is hereby directed to review transitional provisions presently set forth in Chapter 13 of the Charter in light of these proposed charter changes and to draft any necessary new transitional provisions to help and direct the town to implement the new charter changes into its governance. The Town Attorney shall make these proposed new transitional provisions available to the people of the town as soon as possible so that these proposed provisions can be reviewed and ultimately placed on the next Town Council meeting agenda for proposed charter changes, and these approved transitional provisions shall be sent to Boston together with the, to start the special legislation process.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Chair.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would request that we designate, we talk about Town Attorney, the Town Council, that we have a law firm that specializes in charters to look at this. And I would also like to see some additional language in this, that we will send this up to Maryland Contreras up at DHCD, the, that's the Office of Primary Responsibility for charters for a review as well.
I don't feel we need to have a different attorney. We have an attorney who is totally capable of handling this process. Counsel, go ahead.
Not only that, Madam Chair, but not only will the Town Attorney draft something, but House Counsel actually reviews it as well. So there is an attorney at the state that will review it before it gets submitted for legislative purposes.
Thank you. Do I have, I have a second, a first, a motion and a second? Go ahead, please.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. 14. Vote to accept that Section 1.2.1 of the Charter is hereby amended by inserting a second sentence which shall immediately follow the words, quote, "Southbridge Home Rule Charter", unquote, and which shall appear as follows. The Town of Southbridge shall be governed by those general laws applicable to towns where the laws of the Commonwealth distinguish between towns and cities, and all laws applicable to towns shall be applicable to the Town of Southbridge except as otherwise specifically provided in this charter. But Section 32 of Chapter 40 of the general laws shall not apply to the Town of Southbridge.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Agenda item number 15. Vote to accept that Section 2-2-2 of the Charter is hereby amended by inserting the following sentence at the end of the section after the final words, quote, "Term shall have ended", unquote. No qualified voter of the town shall be eligible to run for the office of Counselor if he or she is not in good financial standing with the town by being current in all bills from the town.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was something that was suggested by, I believe it was Mrs. Manna during the Charter Committee, and we did some research into this and we don't believe that you can do this. There are specific things that are set forth in the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the general laws that say you must be a qualified voter of the town, and it stipulates it's there. What you're trying here is to legislate invasion of privacy. I don't think it'll fly, and I think it needs further investigation. We looked into it and it was our understanding you cannot put this type of caveat in the charter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else have anything? Counselor Vandal?
Madam Chair, I think this article is, you people were trying to single out one family in this town with this.
Excuse me, Counselor. I'm having a little bit of a problem with that kind of a, of a...
This was done to single out one family...
Really? Unless you can prove that, I suggest you cease and desist from making a comment of that type.
One family in town. Thank you. That's all I have.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In contrast with the, with Counselor McDonald, we did look at this. It was suggested, we felt there was a strong question of legitimate rights of a citizen in the Commonwealth, not only under the state constitution but under the US Constitution, that in many cases there could be a misinterpretation or a misrepresentation of what the term "in good financial standing" meant is a presumption of guilt contained in that clause that may not in fact be valid if, for example, the "not in good" standing were subsequently found to have not been justified, an individual would have been deprived of their rights as a citizen prior to a legal determination of their status. I raised, for instance, the point I made during Citizens Forum tonight about people who have had to pay fines and fees related to recycling and trash collection, and if in fact upon review the Town Attorney sees that I may indeed have a valid argument, those would be cases where if they hadn't paid those, they wouldn't be eligible to run for Town Council, but it might subsequently be found that they have a legal right and should never have been so found. So I think this is a poorly conceived and probably unconstitutional provision that should be voted down, not only because of its implications, but because of the potential consequences for the town. Thank you.
Counselor Clemens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things on that, I think, Mr. O'Brien, first input. First off, anything that goes before the legislator, the legislation of, Boston, sorry, gets vetted quite strongly with their lawyers and the group up there. They're not, if this is something, if we Jews decide to vote on this, and this is something that they have a problem with, I'm sure that they will let us know because they are the professionals, the experts up there who are supposed to do that. And secondly, I think use the word, we don't use the word just "good standing," we use "good financial standing," financial, obviously, and it's specific to current in all bills from the town, which we shouldn't have a problem being able to know for sure on. But I also point out the oath that we take as counselors. We solemn, we solemnly swear to perform our duties incumbent to us as Town Counselors for the Town of Southbridge faithfully and impartially and according to the laws of the Commonwealth, and more importantly, to abide the charter and the bylaws of the Town of Southbridge, so help us God. That should mean something to the people who take that oath when they stand at that podium. And if the bylaw says you're supposed to pay your bills, whatever they are, then you should pay your bills if you're going to manage the town. If you have, if there's a problem there, then, you know, I don't have a problem with this as being a stipulation, but I just think we should abide by the oath and let Boston sort it out for us. If they don't like it, if it's unconstitutional, if it's wrong, they're going to let us know that and it'll disappear. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Agenda item number 15. This amendment effectively creates a well-off ruling class. I would propose that if someone is struggling to pay their taxes or their water bills, it is because A, by actions of this council, our taxes are now the highest from all our surrounding towns, and B, by actions of this council, our water and sewer rates have gone up over 200% since 2004. And the final point there is that there's a lack of recognition that Southbridge is in a depression. These are indisputable facts. In these circumstances, all of us, regardless of our financial situations, should be allowed to run and take over the very government that has put these undue pressures on us. We should be able to dictate our town's destiny and exercise our rights and run for office to correct the root cause of this. This change disenfranchises most of us and further tightens the grip of a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything before we vote on this issue? Okay.
I just wanted to point out, I did vote on this in general government, but in light of listening to everyone tonight and thinking about it more, I just wanted to bring to your attention as you're voting on this to think about people who have loved ones who may fall ill, and for example, if they do run for council and they are on the council and then loved ones fall ill, and in doing so they've taken the time off from work to take care of their loved ones and in doing so fall behind on payments. That should not place them in a bad light because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Monique Manna, 20 Maple Street. I just want to say I did come forward to the Charter Review Committee and I asked them to look into that. And I hear these comments about if you're behind, you should still be able to run. If I'm in such dire streets at home, I have no business running for Town Council if I can't manage my house and pay my bills. My full focus should be on what's most important, and that's my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
A quick question. Would this also involve the removal of a counselor once they're seated?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no?
Thank you. Agenda item number 16. Vote to accept that Section 2-4.4-4 of the Charter is hereby amended by striking out the wording of 2-4-4 in its entirety and inserting in its place the following section. 2-4-4. The council may establish committees, subcommittees, and advisory committees as it deems reasonable and necessary, and such committees may include non-council members. Counselor appointments to such committees shall be made by the council chairperson. Non-councilor member appointments to such committees shall be made by the council's subcommittee members subject to confirmation by the council.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Seven yes, two no?
Thank you. Agenda item number 17. Vote to accept that the Charter is hereby amended by inserting 2-9-5 as a new section which shall appear as follows. 2-9-5. The vice chairperson may be removed from said office by a 2/3 vote of the entire council, for example, a minimum of six votes. Any member of the council at any point may make a motion to remove the vice chairperson, and if the motion is seconded, the motion shall be voted upon at that time without exception by the council. A new vice chairperson shall be elected by a majority of the vote of the Town Council at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Regis.
Just wording, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
A new vice chairperson shall be elected by...
Counselor Regis.
Just wording, Madam Chair.
Uh huh.
A new vice chairperson shall be elected by a majority vote of the town council?
Absolutely.
We have a couple of ones in there that shouldn't be. Because I believe what this is, is exactly how the Charter Review Committee recommended also.
Yes. Okay. Anybody okay with that? Do I need to read it over? Do we need to make a change in a vote to remove two words?
I think that's a simple typo.
Thank you. Okay. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Counselor Landyman?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 18. Vote to accept that the Charter is hereby amended by inserting 3-1-5 as a new section which shall appear as follows. 3-1-5. Any elected or appointed member of a quasi-judicial board shall be limited to one such board and ineligible to serve on any other such quasi-judicial board during their term.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor McCucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Landyman?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Whole part about appointing a Board of Health in that particular section completely. Because, and like to add it per the recommendation of the Charter Review Committee, and it goes in another place. My motion is...
Where does it go?
Well, my motion right now is to strike that verbiage at 4-3-1A.
Do I have a second? There's your second. Discussion?
Thank you.
No discussion? So you want to change your motion. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. The motion right now is to strike that particular section, and then I'd like to, I don't know when it would be relevant to bring it up, Madam Chair, but to add it in the area where we had added it in the Charter Review Committee.
Where would that be?
I found it, Madam Chair.
Where is it?
It would be added in Section 8 of Chapter 3, and it would be add 3-8-1. "A Board of Health of three members shall be elected by the voters for three-year staggered And then, "Powers and Duties and Compensation." 3-9-1. "Offices and Members of Boards established under this chapter, unless otherwise provided herein, shall exercise such powers and duties as are and may be provided by general law, this Charter, bylaw, and/or order of the Town Council." And 3-9, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see it. Was it the intent of the General Government Subcommittee to strike one of these sections?
No.
Counselor Regis, you have any answer?
I do. It was, Madam Chair, because if I recall in General Government Subcommittee, those recommendations by the Charter Review Committee, some of them we did not even take up. This 3-8-1 is a proposed new section by the Charter Review Committee. It is not in the current Charter, so there was nothing to strike or amend.
I see.
This is a proposed new section by the Charter Review Committee.
Okay. Well, you have an opportunity, once again, to vote it. As Counselor McDonald is proposing, he is looking to put, to avoid 4-3-1A completely, and instead insert 3-8-1. Now, if this was voted in, General Government, to strike 3-8-1, and instead amend 4.4-3-1A, I think you have your answer. Counselor. But, since it's a motion, we have a second. Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize. Was Counselor McDonald's motion to add 3-8-1, a Board of Health of three members or five members?
Three, elected.
He's got, this is what it says, 3-8-1. Section 8, 3-8-1. "A Board of Health of three members shall be elected by the voters for three-year staggered terms." Period. That's it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. And that is what you wish to, that's what you wish to continue with at Section 8 Board of Health? That's what your motion is, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
We have a second on that, and I'm going to entertain any discussion there, or not. Counselor Landry?
Actually, this motion, I would agree with it. The only part I really could disagree with is the three. If you put it to five, and we have staggered voting for the public, I'm all in favor of that. But as your motion is right now, currently on the floor, I can't support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Clemens?
Thank you. The three versus five, I mean, I witnessed, I think all these boards should be at least five. I witnessed, you know, Liquor Board, for instance, when there were only two members present while it was a quorum, and one of the members hadn't been present at the previous meeting, which you ended up with, was a member with minutes, approving his own minutes, or the minutes, and voting unanimously himself, or, you know, theirself, two men anyway, so it doesn't matter, on that particular, it just was quite, it just did not seem quite right to, you know, three members, when one's missing, you're down to two, you need three. I don't care what board it is, whether it's liquor, whether it's, whether it's planning, whether it's Board of Health, the three is very tentative i-in terms of getting work done, getting jobs done, and we do know that in our community, there's a lot more that our Board of Health is involved with than in some communities, as well as being the, we're part of the tri epic and the emergency group, we're like the center point for, what is that called, Mr. Manager, Mr. Clark?
Tri epic.
It's tri epic, okay, in terms of we are the, we are the collaborating effort on that particular deal for other communities. I mean, there are a lot of things, and Board members have mentioned before, that there's a lot of work involved, so I think spreading that out and having five is quite logical. As far as elected versus appointed, at one point I thought a combination sounded nice. I do know that there's concern occasionally about people running for office, which is not necessarily an easy thing to do, and I know that there is some hesitation on the part of professionals who may choose to be on our board when they find out that they have to go through that whole election process, which can be quite daunting for some, and I support maybe a split scenario, but, but not a fully elected board. So, that's what I have.
Counselor McDonald?
Madam Chair, thank you. If that's what it'll take to get Counselor Landry to support this, then I would be inclined to change my motion to a, to state, so a five-person elected Board of Health.
I'd second that, if you're making a form of motion.
Yes.
I just wanna, just to recap, I think where we are, the main motion was to go from three to five and retain the appointed. The amendment that stands before the council is to go to, well, I guess now, a five-person elected Board of Health.
That's pretty much right. Yep, that's where we are. So, I'm going to, we've got a motion, a second. Ms. DiMartino, you wish to add something before we vote?
The Charter Review that we were given only had one signature on it, Counselor McDonald's, and I'm just questioning what else might have been missed. And the copy that Counselor McDonald has tonight was the one I asked for, from Maddie, so I'm just asking to, instead of giving you another shock in case you might miss something again, because I'm not sure if that copy received was accurate now, and from what's going on, if maybe you should table the rest of the items and go back to discussion, so as not to shock yourself further if another surprise should come up.
Nope. I'm not going to be doing, entertaining that tonight, I'm afraid. This is the evening to get this taken care of. It has had plenty of opportunity, everybody involved has had plenty of opportunity to come forward and make any changes, anything that was wrong, right, and it's going to happen this evening. Did somebody have their hand up over here to speak to this, to this motion that is on the table right now?
I'm just gonna respond to her comments.
No?
I would just like to say that I think the Board of Health is just as important as the Town Council and the School Committee and any other elected office that could, you could think of here in town and beyond, and as such, I would be in full support of an elected Board of Health, whether it be three or five. I think that this is a position that is too important to not be fully accountable to the people of South Bridge. I know other counselors have privately told me that they supported an appointed board because they felt that would be the way to get the most qualified people, but I think that's a very dangerous path to go down, because if you think that the best way to get appoint, to get qualified people is to appoint everybody, then you might as well argue that the Town Manager should appoint all of the Town Counselors and the School Committee as well. I mean, I think it's a little ridiculous. So yes, please do consider an elected Board of Health. I think that would do a great service to our town in terms of letting us get beyond all of the Board of Health controversy that has been happening these last few years, and get back to the important work of all of the problems that we need to work on in this town, to make it even greater than it is now, which is pretty great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Landry?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do agree with you. We do need to move forward. Before we move forward, though, because there's been motions that we've been all over the place on this one thing, I really, if we're gonna move forward on Counselor McDonald's amendment, I want it repeated, so everyone knows where we're at, and then hopefully we can move forward. That's just a suggestion.
Okay, I'll read it.
Thank you.
3.8.1. "A Board of Health of five members shall be elected by the voters for three-year staggered terms." That's, that's what we're contemplating. I've got a, I've got Counselor Regis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would be supporting this. I also felt like Counselor Landry, I don't agree with the three-member Board of Health, five, absolutely, I think is very important. However, now I'm concerned, in looking at the bylaws again, in 3-209 states, there shall be a Board of Health appointed by the Town Manager, subject to confirmation by the Council of the five members. Here we are again, we're gonna muddy the water. And I know that, Madam Chair, you're going to be appointing a bylaw review committee, but if this vote does pass, as far as going to an elected five-member Board of Health, that that is what we're going to suggest for a change to the Charter, I would ask that we act forthwith and change this bylaw. I don't, I don't, we're gonna muddy the waters once again, and just allow there to be something else to question for those who, you know, look for something to question. I don't, I don't want that. What, what, in the General Government Subcommittee, what we were doing was trying to get the Charter to work with the bylaws here. They have to work with each other, so we need to make a decision what we want to do, but they both need to, they need to work with each other. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor?
Thank you. I would just remind that these considered changes would have to go to Boston, would have to be approved, would, it's a fairly long process, and then, of course, we'd have to come back to the voters. So potentially, at that point, you know, bylaw review and all that good stuff, we could try to, we can tone it up and figure out our bylaw when, when the decision comes down. I mean, it would seem, I know it's the cart and the horse and all that, that type of thing, but I would think that at this current, present time, we're cert, we're working according to our bylaw, and will continue, my understanding, according to legal opinions and all, that we'll continue working to the bylaw.
Until.
Until further change. And while we're contemplating change, which is good, it's not enacted, it's not been legitimized by the, by Boston, and it has not gone to the voters, and it has not, so, you know, I mean, I think at the time when, when we change the Charter, or if we change the Charter, then we'll have to update our bylaws through the process there, perhaps. I mean, is that, are we in the right process, you know, as far as legally, Town Attorney? You know, sequential order, so to speak? This is just potential change, so I don't think we're in a murky water yet.
Okay. All right. Go. We're going with a vote here. Let me have a roll call, please.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
No.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
No.
Counselor Landry?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
No.
Five yes, four no.
Okay. So that one passes as, and this is going to be at the separate section, so if this is going to be at the separate section, it appears to me we have to delete 4.4-3-1, at least in, "The Town Manager shall have the power to appoint, subject to confirmation by the Town Council, the following boards and commissions." We have to delete A, because he will no longer have the power to appoint a three-member Board of Health, a five-member Board of Health, or anything else. B, a seven-member Planning Board with two alternate members, that stays. C, a three-member Board of Registars. D, a three-member Board of Appeals with two alternate members. E, a seven-member Conservation Commission, and the members of such other boards and commissions as the Council deems appropriate to establish. The terms of the members of such boards and commissions shall be staggered. So, with that said, we need to vote on the deletion of A in 4-3-1. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did include that as part of my motion, was to strike that and add. We did, that was all inclusive.
Well, I didn't, I, as I, as I read the vote, I did not, so we will do that now.
If you take A out, then everything moves up a letter.
Right. It'll all have to move up a letter. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
No.
Counselor Landry?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
No.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Six yes, three no.
Okay. Agenda item number 20. "A vote to accept that Section 4-3-1 of the Charter is hereby amended by inserting on line five after quote E, 'a seven-member commission, conservation commission,' unquote, the following phrase, F, A, 'a three-member liquor license board with one alternate member.'"
So move. Madam Chair, because of the vote that was just taken, E would now become D, and F would now become E.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's correct. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know why we would stay with the three-member board when we've talked about, I know, I've heard it mentioned by some other counselors here, that they want, rather see five versus three, but we're, isn't the Liquor Board presently five, and we're reducing it? No, it's three? Okay, with two alternates? Okay.
No, it's a three-member board with, with one alternate, I believe. It is just being included as, as part of 4-3-1.
Okay. To be consistent, Madam Chair, I'd like to amend this to say five. Let me have...
I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Do I have the floor?
You go ahead, Mr. Martinek.
Dennis Martinek, 35, Pine Ridge Road. Just to follow up on what Counselor McDonald was just asking, what I just listened to, and I just, I guess what I'm looking for is some clarification. I heard the important rationale as to why the Board of Health should be five members, which I'm completely fine with, but to be consistent, if we're gonna have five for all the reasons that were just mentioned previously, does it not make sense to also make it a five-member liquor licensing board? Thank you.
Does anybody, first of all, I need a motion before we even discuss this. Second. Okay, now I'm opening it up to discussion. No discussion? Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Nicola? Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landry?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Seven yes, two no?
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 21. Did you wish to speak?
Can we just ask for a clarification?
Certainly.
What was just voted?
What was just voted was vote to accept that Section 4.3.1 of the Charter is hereby amended by inserting on line five after E, "a seven-member conservation commission," the following phrase, "A five-member liquor licensing board with one alternate member." That's, that's what you all voted on. So now it's a five-member liquor license board.
With an alternate?
With one alternate member. Just changed the three to a five.
Why would you need an alternate?
That's how it was voted.
What was your motion, Counselor?
Well, actually, I didn't make a motion, because I, it had already been moved and seconded by, I think, Counselor Spinelli and Counselor Livinggood, and I was just...
I got the impression we're going under.
How do you have it written up?
I thought we're voting on his amended.
And what was, how did you have that written up, dear?
I don't have it word for word.
You don't have it word for word? I see. Okay. This is getting out of, out of, reaching a level that is really...
Motion to reconsider the previous vote and start over?
Yes. Let's start over, and then, and then that's, that's, yeah, okay. What exactly is this council proposing to us? Do you want a five-member liquor license board with one alternate, a three-member liquor license board with one alternate, a five-member liquor license board with no alternates, 25 people out there drinking beer at the end of the day deciding on what they want to do and who they're gonna give a license to? What would you like? Could somebody please be clear, instead of political for a moment, and tell me what you would like? Let me have your motion, sir.
I'd amend it to say five instead of three, Madam Chair.
A five-member instead of three with an alternate?
Of one, that's fine.
With one alternate, you know, finish the sentence. A five-member liquor licensing board with one alternate member, is that what you're proposing?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second, please?
It's already been voted.
So, so what more, you're telling me you want to rescind it and reconsider it?
Reconsider.
Okay. That's what it is, is that what the council intends for us to do? Is to vote to have a five-member liquor licensing board with one alternate member?
I have a question.
Yes.
In regard to the alternate, is that alternate, that alternate is strictly to take the place of the...
Of one of the five.
Who has no voting rights until, unless there's...
Unless there's...
I just want to be very clear on that.
That's an alternate? Okay.
Yes, but...
And is that what the council, and that's what the council intended to vote on?
I'll second that.
You're seconding that?
I'm getting a motion, I'll make a second.
Okay, then vote it again. Could we have another roll call, please? Yes. I want this correct for her purposes.
I agree, but we already voted on this, so a motion has to be made to rescind it first.
Let's reconsider.
Right. Then, we have to rescind it before we can go to the motion.
And we just keep changing the whole thing.
And I'm so sorry, I just want to make this correct.
That's why...
That's all I want.
Okay. So we're voting to rescind what is there? Is that what you're suggesting?
Motion to rescind the previous vote.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Everybody wants to wear the big hat.
No.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landry?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no?
Okay. So now we're gonna start over. Yes, Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to make a motion to a five-member liquor licensing board. Period.
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landry?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Agenda item number 21. "Vote to accept that Charter is hereby amended by striking out Section 4-4-2 in its entirety and not replacing it with any other language or sections."
So move. Second.
Okay. Do I have a discussion on this? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a very dangerous action to do this. This 4-4-2 is the paragraph right after 4-4-1, which is power to rescind appointments by the Town Manager. First, I believe that actually this is required language, because if you go back, Hull versus Williams or something, that, it has to do with whether or not a governing body, whether they be the executive head or not, can remove somebody from a quasi-judicial board. That power typically does not extend to those boards for reasons to keep it apolitical. I think we would be doing a disservice to the community, I think we'll be doing a disservice to this Charter by not putting this protection in there, because what this means is if we move this out, that any time the Appointing Authority has a problem with somebody on a quasi-judicial board for political reasons, they can rescind an appointment. We can't let that happen. They need to be free to exercise their First Amendment rights to set up in, in defense of their particular office that they're holding without fear of any type of political influence. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I apologize, I just want to make sure I was crystal clear. I know that the motion is withdrawn, I believe Counselor Regis made a new motion. Has that been voted on or not, the liquor?
Yes, we voted on that.
I'm just very confused by this whole thing with all of this.
Yep. There's a lot of reasons for that this evening, Mr. Martinek, lots of reasons for that. Okay. That was done, that was all done and taken care of. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm speaking in opposition to this amendment to the Charter. Excuse me. The reason they're called quasi-judicial boards is, aside from their rulemaking authority, they also adjudicate infractions of those rules. Anyone going before such an adjudicatory body, whether it's the Board of Health, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Liquor Licensing Board, is entitled to the presumption of a fair and impartial hearing. How can anyone presume to have a fair or impartial hearing when, among other reasons, one might be removed for something as vaguely defined as insubordination, which could constitute or be constituted by not voting as the Town Council Chairman, as the Head of Government, or the Town Manager, as the Head of Administration, so directs them? That would constitute insubordination. That's why you cannot remove a person in this capacity so easily, so as to insulate them from outside influences. them from outside influences in rendering an impartial decision. To remove this would be equivalent to saying that the President of the United States can at whim remove a justice of the Supreme Court simply because a decision displeases him, which is ludicrous on his face. And I realize before someone speaks up to the effect, I'm drawing a comparison between an obvious judicial body and a quasi-judicial body, but I am speaking about both acting in their judicial capacity. And I think anybody who stops for a moment realizes that this flies in the face and contradicts everything Mr. Spinelli said about not wanting to undo the set of balances that existed as a status quo ante in taking up a review of this charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one's actually a little bit more confusing now because you just voted on an amendment to make it an elected Board of Health, which is a quasi-judicial board. Should this one pass, essentially it gives the town manager the power to dismiss an elected official. So those two together are in conflict with each other should they be submitted together. The logic there needs to be rethought. Sorry. Can I finish or...
Finish.
Okay. This one's the more worrisome of a lot of the changes that are here. Remembering what I said, that the politicization of our Board of Health is detrimental to our well-being and protection. Now this proposal gives the town manager the authority to dismiss anyone on the Board of Health because they show insubordination. That's not doing what he orders. That's insubordination. Removing this clause makes the Board of Health a subordinate to the town manager. Protections and well-being may as well just go away. We should... I'm sorry. We should just close up shop and hire to sell employees to protect us at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's important. 4-4-2, said power, said power as defined in 4-4-1. The town manager shall have the power to rescind, subject to confirmation by the town council, for cause. It goes on. Provided that the town managers... It's his appointment. What we just did, our vote was to take the Board of Health from the section as a town manager appointment. So we're not talking about the Board of Health. We're talking about the liquor licensing board. We're talking about conservation. We're talking about planning. 4-4-1, yes, the town manager has the power for cause with our approval only. So 4-4-2, I don't... I personally do not see a problem with getting rid of that. I think it just muddy... Again, muddies the waters. And like I said, the Board of Health, we just voted that suggesting that that go to a five-member elected. So...
Just for clarification, I do not believe that an elected official can be removed by the town council. So once the Board of Health becomes an elected official, these rules would apply. This proposed motion was contemplated if the other motions were approved as written, but they weren't. They were changed. So the Board of Health is now out of the purview of an appointed position. It's an elected position. You can't dethrone someone from an elected position.
Correct.
So we just have to be aware of that.
Thank you.
I think Mr. McDonald had the floor.
Mr. Martinek?
Thank you. As many of you know, I spent over a year on the Charter Review Committee, and I'd like to thank Counselor McDonald for everything he did. And I also like to thank Counselor Regis for attending several of the meetings as well. I wasn't coming down this evening for several reasons. One of them is when I look out at the crowd or what is there of the crowd, I know why I have not been to this podium in over a year. One of the things, though, that really compelled me to come down here was when the chairman of the General Government Subcommittee made a statement to the effect that we were political. And I'd like to just throw something out since I don't believe that I saw you at any of the meetings. The Charter Review Committee did not agree with each other most often times, but we did have the same goal. And that goal was to do what was best for the people of Southbridge. And it was not to do anything to insulate the town council or the town manager because there's a separation of powers. The United States Constitution was written over the course of 116 days from start to finish. One of the major objectives was to create a separation of powers between the branches, with each performing separate but distinct duties, so that they could keep each other in check, preventing one branch from gaining arbitrary power. Each branch was to be checked by the standard of law set forth in the Constitution, from which each officer of government must swear to uphold. If those officers failed to keep their oath of office, it was not only the right but the duty of those who chose them to remove them. The Southbridge Charter Review Committee spent one year reviewing our existing charter with the intent of clarifying or modifying points that were either unclear or outdated. The major objectives of the committee were to maintain the balance of power and in doing so, preventing any one group from gaining arbitrary power. And for those who swore to uphold their oath of office but failed...
Excuse me. Would you like another two minutes? Your three minutes are up.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, please.
All in favor? Of two more minutes? Okay, continue.
Thank you. And for those who swore to uphold their oath of office but failed to provide the people the right and duty to remove them. The General Government Subcommittee, with all best of intentions, as far as I can tell, spent mere hours reviewing the recommendations of the Charter Review Committee. Their major objectives seem to me to be crystal clear, to basically give the arbitrary power to the town manager. It's been mentioned before many times, I think once this evening in many different council meetings, that the CEO of the town is not the town manager. Town manager is the chief administrative officer. The CEO is the nine of you. And I think that by going and passing this motion tonight, you're doing a disservice not only to the people of Southbridge and to the balance of power, but to this body of government that's supposed to be in and behind the people of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Thanks. I just want to respond. Mr. O'Brien had made a number of points, and there is something to be said about our charter in terms of vagueness. One of those things was the fact that we had the town manager appointing quasi-judicial board members, but we had no mechanism for removal clearly stated. In Caleres versus Donovan, there's a comment that is made that in the fact of statutory silence, which in terms of what our charter is doing, the power of removal presumptively is incident to the power of appointment. When I broached that subject with the AG's office and commented on it, that our charter clearly states that the power of removal is not with the power of appointment because we specify that, the comments were that you should... Your legislative committee, your board, your council, generally, that's who it goes to. However, they were also very clear that it wasn't... There was nothing on record, there was nothing in her information that would state how to handle it, to rely on our town attorney, and that there was no presumption that the state would handle it for us. So I just make that note. I also beg to differ on the... There have been cases, you know, there are many courts that state... The court states many federal statutes that permit the executive to remove quasi-judicial officers at will. Prevalence of such statutes strongly supports their constitutionality. I think it's Reagan versus the US when they upheld the removal of commissions for the Indian territories. There are a number of... Yeah, we're not going to get into the legalese of it, but there are a number of legal cases that show different methods of removal. Quasi-judicial, yes, they decide, they have hearings, they act autonomously in many ways, but they're not able to disregard the rules and regulations themselves. And we, as the legislative component here in our town, we ratify those appointments and to be able to rescind them or to be able to look back at a appointment that perhaps, you know, hasn't... Someone perhaps has... I'm not even going to get into that. There needs to be a mechanism in our charter for removal as well as appointment. That's all I'm going to say about that. I mean, and we have statutory silence going on, and so I don't think this does any more than to allow us to have that. So I'm just going to go from there.
Okay.
Check with your lawyer.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I disagree with Counselor, the vice chair, in this form. If we do exactly what's intended here, remove 4-4-2, we create statutory silence. It's not silent the way it's written right now. It says that there shall not... This power shall not extend to quasi-judicial boards and that if you look at the history behind that with the Charter Commission, was to insulate them from political influence. And I think the proper citation is Harrison versus Hull, where the Board of Selectmen tried to remove the entire redevelopment authority, which is a quasi-judicial board, because they didn't like the way they voted on something. And those members of the RDA that were inappropriately removed won their case because once you put them in their position and they've passed that qualification test, then they need to be able to do their due diligence and do their adjudicatory actions, as Mr. O'Brien so ably pointed out. So if we take out this element right now, we are creating the statutory silence, which means that anything, no holds barred, and then you'd have to... You'd be creating even more problems, but if we leave it in, we'll be better off. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? If not, let's have a roll call on this vote, please.
Counselor Vandal? Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landevan?
No.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Marocucci? Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Six yes, three no?
Thank you. Agenda item number 22. Vote to accept that the Charter is hereby amended by striking out section 4-6-1 in its entirety and by inserting in its place the following sentence. 4-6-1, final removal of the manager shall be affected by a two-thirds vote of the entire council. For example, a minimum of six votes at an open council meeting.
Over. Second.
Discussion. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is something that I feel very strongly about. This should not be personal in any way, shape, or form. When we looked at this, we preserved the language as is. In looking at what the Charter Commission did, they wanted to make sure that there was a separation of power and that that power, the executive power rested where it needed to be. This was to alleviate a problem they had with the previous charter, which required all 13 councils to be present to remove a town manager. And it came out about, as my understanding and talking was, former Counselor Peter Ramirez, who was in the Charter Commission, and Mr. Galanek, and the former chair of that commission, Mr. Attorney Colignesi. Now, just illustrating their cover letter, they said, "The town manager, in revising the position of town manager, the commission was mindful that the public favored greater accountability in this position to our elected representatives. The voters elect key decision and policymakers," that's us, the council, "while day-to-day responsibility of implementing those decisions is turned over to a professional selected on the basis of education and experience." So the first being executive authority, this latter being administrative authority. The town manager is not an elected position. I liken it to, the voters are the stockholders, we're the board of directors or the trustees, and the manager is like the president or the chief administrative officer. We, as elected officials, the chair is removed for two-thirds removal because that's to keep the politics out of the council. But the council chair does not get removed from the council. Only two-thirds to remove from the chair. To liken them to be the same, they're not. They're not co-equal. The manager is an elected official, and really, it takes 51% of the removal. It should stay the way it is. There's no need to change it. We have the protections in place, and I think if you go back in history, as I've said with some of the other things, it preserves itself. It shows itself that it works. The system works, and it should be left alone. As Mr. Martinek pointed out when he spoke, our endeavor was to preserve as much of the Charter Commission's work because we thought that it was a sound and viable document, and our intent was to leave it as best we could, preserve it where it provided the protections and only addressed few things. So I am adamantly opposed to this. I don't think it's appropriate to make a two-thirds vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. I will also speak in opposition to this and wish to briefly amplify on the comments of Counselor McDonald. This, once again, I believe undermines the statements that Counselor Spinelli made at the outset. This disturbs the balance that exists in the existing charter. The town council chairman, as it clearly states here, is the head of government. This was never made clearer than in the aftermath of the recent tornado tragedy, when representatives from the state emergency management office arrived here and would not begin their briefing or interaction with town officials until the town council chairman arrived, because that person is the head of government. The current charter clearly states that the town manager is gifted with that title. He is, in fact, as it says quite clearly in 4-2-4, the chief administrative officer. He is not the chief executive officer. He is the chief administrative officer. By voting in favor of this amendment to the charter, you are elevating, with no personal disrespect intended, an office manager to the level of the head of government. This is clearly ludicrous. You are elevating an employee to the level of an elected representative. Town manager, and again, I mean, no disrespect, I'm talking simply in structural terms, is the employee of the town employed, hired, and kept on at the will of the council, right now by a majority vote. To increase that vote would make that person's tenure equivalent to the tenure granted to the person chosen by the council to be the official head of the town government. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I respectfully, but 300%, disagree with the previous two speakers. As a municipal official who is appointed by a five-member Board of Selectmen, as is the town administrator in the community where I work, this is something that we need to do. This has to happen. I am extremely concerned about... I hope Mr. Clark is with us for a long time. However, when it comes to the recruitment process and us trying to find someone, a qualified professional, someone who will want to come to the town of Southbridge, to work for the town of Southbridge, this is something that qualified, professional municipal managers look at in communities when they are searching for a community to move to. This is something that they look at, and this is something that is happening in communities all across the Commonwealth. Check it out. Trust me. A majority does not give that position... That position needs some type of security. It does. It is our responsibility as the council to have the... It's the checks and balances, all of that, accountability, that's... We are accountable to you, and the manager is accountable to us. That is our job to hold him accountable. But I find where it's a simple majority, it's the whim of... We are political. We are elected. I don't consider myself a political person, but guess what? I ran for office, therefore I am political. I don't believe that that person's security should be left up to us, me, just as a whim, just as five to four. I don't agree with it at all, and I completely, 300%, agree with this change to the charter.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to point out, what we're doing here with this amendment is you are making an amendment to the charter based on a personality. You all love him, and I have no business...
Excuse me. Don't make that assumption, sir. You make a lot of assumptions you have no right to make, and I'm getting a little tired of it. It's tedious at best.
Love is a strong word.
Yes.
You all support... Seven of you support him clearly, and as that, I have no business asking for his removal at this point. Seven members of this council are happy with him. That's good.
Again.
I'll listen to anybody, but I don't want anyone assuming my position on anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I take great pride in the two times that I've been selected by this community. It was a unanimous vote of the council.
Madam Chair, he's directing himself directly to me. Madam Chair, he's directing himself directly to me.
Mr. Fernandez, you are testing my patience. Finish your statement and be over with it, please. And avoid any further accusations or trying to speak for this council.
Certainly. Currently, the town manager must at least keep a majority of the council happy in order to keep his job. This translates into keeping the majority of the people happy. The town manager, a person who is not elected and is merely an employee and must carry out the will of the council and the people, currently must please most of us, most of them. However, these changes mean he must only keep four members happy at all times. A small minority will now control the entire town in matters that deal with the town manager. He no longer needs to please the majority. Only a select club of four, only please a select club of four. His reign is virtually endless. All hail to the new unelected mayor.
I'm going to speak now, because I've heard a lot up here, I've heard a lot out there, and I'm very proud of myself tonight. But I'm going to tell you my take on this. Whatever I feel for our current town manager, I'm setting aside. A five-to-four vote can remove a manager? Do you have any idea how much it costs to bring a manager to this community? Do you know what the vetting process costs? One of your former speakers, who's no longer with us in the room, Mr. O'Brien, was on that last committee. He should of anybody out there know how much it costs. You have to bring in a hired gun to help you go through the vetting process. You have to appoint a committee. A whole litany of people come forward, if you're lucky. Oftentimes, this community has developed a reputation where it's very difficult to bring a manager into this community because of the way they're treated. But besides that, I'm looking at it from the financial point. It's very expensive. Every time you dispatch a manager because five people don't like the way he does things, and you have to bring somebody else forward, it costs this community a lot of money. And I'm not going to take the chance any longer that we bring a manager into this community and he has to sit at the edge of his seat at the quote-unquote whim of the council. I don't see anything wrong with a two-thirds vote for something as important as the manager of this community, who is the administrator of this community. He's not, you know, just one of the guys in the town hall. He is, he's the boss of the guys in the town hall. And personally, I'm 100% in support, and I pushed for this, because I'm a little sick and tired of counselors approaching a town manager and threatening him with a five-to-four vote. It's unprofessional, it's unwarranted, and it has to stop. And as Counselor Regis said, other communities are adopting this in droves, because it's far more attractive to somebody to look at something like this, to know they have some sort of security, and don't have to sit at the edge of their seat. No, I don't, I don't find, I don't think this is tipping the balance in any bad way whatsoever. It's reasonable, and it certainly protects us a little bit as well from having, you know, five members on this council who have, you know, on a witch hunt to get rid of a town manager, and then we have to start all over again with another vetting process. Expensive, very expensive. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, and unless anybody else has anything they'd like to bring forward, I'm going to entertain that vote. Do I have any further discussion on this issue?
Please.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Seven yes, two no.
Agenda item number 23. Vote to accept that the Charter is hereby amended by inserting before the word "manufacture" on line two and before the word "manufacture" on line three in section 9-1-2, the following word, "commercial." So moved. Roll call, please.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 24. Vote to accept that the section 11-1-1 of the Charter is hereby amended by striking the phrase "last Tuesday in June" and inserting in its place the following words, "second Tuesday in June," in accordance with proposed resolution H. 1972. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I think the town clerk wished to come forward with something?
Whereas the primary, if this legislation goes through, will be the first week, the first Tuesday in June. Having two elections in two weeks is just not very easy to do. I mean, we'd have to hire, we'd have to get new memory cards, and I mean, it's very costly.
How often do we do this?
It would be every two, every four years.
Every four years.
We'd have to get new, you know, rent machines if possible, but it's very difficult to rent other machines, because we have a 10-day window for recounts. And if everybody in the state is having the same election day, it'd be very difficult to rent any machines or anything from other towns.
Can I ask a question to you?
Sure.
Why is it always a Tuesday? What's with Tuesday?
That's the state.
The state says it's got to be on a Tuesday?
Not our town election, just all the state elections, federal elections are all Tuesday. That's them. We used to have it on Friday, but before the Charter changed.
So before we got this resolution, we were in good shape, because we had talked and everybody, we'd come up and really looked at the dates and tried to be very mindful of what your office needed.
Right.
So now with this resolution situation, and of course, going into May, we have budget issues coming out of May. We're doing now this issue four years. The third Tuesday was their reason we weren't doing the third Tuesday, which is only a week before the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, it's really, it doesn't, it's six of one happened in the other...
We were trying to get away from the end of the month because of the holiday and the lack of participate, trying to increase participation, sort of like what they're trying to do by their resolution.
Right.
Well, got any suggestions?
I don't, I mean, a lot of cities and towns are going, or have their town elections in May, some have them in April. We were basically the last ones in June, when we were at the beginning of the month, let alone the end of the month. We were just way out there. I mean, I don't know what...
Budgetary process is a concern, though, correct, Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, I mean, I would express some concern. I have seen it done in towns where you have, you go through a budget process and then you have an election that changes it. But certainly, I think here, where we have a little bit more of a condensed process, calls for the process to be finished by the, basically by the end of May, you could conceivably have where you set a budget, you've set everything ready to go, and then have three new elected people, and everything goes into upheaval because they weren't part of the budgetary process. So for the sake of continuity and budgeting, and you're going to be doing budgeting every year.
Right.
You know, I think that if we could try to avoid May, then it would be helpful strictly from budgeting, per se.
Right. I mean, before the Charter actually took place in 1974, the elections were in March. I mean, it's entirely up to the town when they want to have town elections. But I'm just saying, two weeks in a row is going to be a very difficult thing to do, especially when you have the 10-day recount process and everything. You can't touch anything for at least 10 days.
Counselor Regis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What if we do, what if we did the first Tuesday in May? And then the elected officials would be part of the budget process?
That's what I had proposed, but it seems to bring a problem forward because of...
The way the budget process works is the budget is basically done in April, and then has to be voted on in May. So to go through the process with one council and then to enter the voting process with another council, I'm just saying, may be problematic.
But don't we normally vet the budget during the month of May in our subcommittees?
It's finalized, it's finalized in May. It's vetted basically through April and into, sometimes into May. So basically, all I'm saying is the council that vets the budget may not be the same council that votes the budget.
I have a suggestion. I'd like to make a motion, or, no, I can't make a motion anymore, but I'd entertain a motion if somebody wanted to strike this from the, you know, strike this completely and we'll leave it as it is and...
So moved.
I'll second.
Why don't we go to third Tuesday?
No. No point.
Well, it is, it's still farther away from the Fourth of July week, which has been the problem.
It's just, it's very close to the end of the fiscal year as well, and it does fall into times the Fourth of July week.
Right.
Like it did this year. But, I mean, that's entirely up to the town what they decide when they want to vote. They could go April, they could go the end of June, I mean...
Well, I think that just from, for the reasons that have been thrown out here this evening, maybe it's not a good suggestion.
Yes?
Quick question, why couldn't it be on the same week as the first Tuesday instead? You know, at the same time we're having the state election. Is there a reason we can't have a town election?
To have two elections in one day, you'd have to treat it as two separate elections.
You can't have them together?
No, because it's two separate ballots and everything, so people would have to wait in line twice, they'd have to have twice the election workers, and they'd have to wait, voters would have to wait twice in line, and that probably wouldn't work out.
I came from where all elections were held on the same days.
Yeah.
And you had the same ballot for everything.
Yeah, that's too easy. This is Massachusetts, please. Come on. Okay. So we have a motion to strike this agenda item and leave section 11-1-1 as is? And I have a second? Could I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 25. Vote to accept that section 11-4-3 of the Charter is hereby amended by striking out the words "25" on quote in line four and inserting in its place the following word, "15." So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landjevan?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 26. Counselors' forum. I'm going to start with Counselor Regis.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Markucci?
I did, but I won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vandal?
I have a short one. Lebonin Hill Project is almost complete and is looking pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Landjevan?
Sometimes, nothing said is better, so I will pass at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Spinelli?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Livinggood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's late, I'm passing on.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McDonald?
I'd be the odd person out, nothing tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Also scared. Counselor Clemens?
I'll be the odd person out. I just want to do one more reminder, because it's the last meeting before the chloramines meeting. So I just reiterate what our town manager said earlier, that there will be a, I'm going to read the release that we're doing at the town of South, it's called Chloramines on Tap, is what we're calling it. The town of Southbridge is implementing a new chloramines disinfection system for their public drinking water supply. Do you have concerns or questions? Join us Tuesday, October 18th at 6:30 for the informational forum. As you mentioned, Conference Rooms 1 and 2, Harrington Hospital, 100 South Street. The speakers include Mariel Stone, Section Chief of the Drinking Water Program of Mass DEP Central Regional Office; Dr. Jeffrey Griffiths, MD, MPH, and TM, Director of Global Health, Public Health, and Professional Degree Programs at Tufts University School of Medicine; a member of the National Drinking Water Advisory Council, and U.S. EPA Member, Drinking Water Panel Science Advisory Board. Also, as the town manager pointed out, we were informed that William Nunnery, who is the project manager for Weston and Sampson Water Treatment and Water Quality, and the designer of our new water treatment system for the Southbridge plant. These professionals will provide insight into why we are changing our system, along with